Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, Aaron, please.
Amy Johnson.
Here.
Casey Boer.
Here.
Wayne Schmidt.
Here.
Midge Swedberg.
Here.
Scott Meverden.
Here.
John Ortlieb.
Here.
Kevin Schmidt.
Here.
Lee Dashlet will be here momentarily.
We'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you confirm the meeting is in compliance with the open meetings law?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Uh, can I get a motion to approve or to make changes to the order of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Midge, second by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Carried. Uh, three separate meeting minutes, April first and two, April sixteenth. Did everybody have a chance to look at it and could I get a motion to approve all three?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion by Kevin, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Is there anybody here for public comment? Anyone in the audience want to come up for public comment? And one last time for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on. Did everyone have a chance to look at the bills and credit card payments? And is there any questions?
Uh, I have a question, Mr. Mayor. On the Algoma community wellness, is that a monthly fee that we pay and who qualifies for that?
So that is something that's offered to the fire, rescue, and then all full-time city employees. Um, the city pays for a portion of their monthly, um, benefits and then the employee also pays for it. Traditionally, we were just paying it out of payroll, but that was leaving us paying bills kind of months behind. So what we're doing is we're paying it right away as soon as we get the invoice and then we're catching up on the backend when the employee has their payroll.
Is that based on the number that are utilizing it or is it just a?
It's just a flat fee. So I think it, I, I think it might even be like half, like if the month membership is, like for me, it's thirty-five dollars. I pay half out of my payroll deduction and then the city covers the other half.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, if I could.
Do you have a question?
No. No, I didn't.
Looking for a motion to approve the bills?
So moved, second.
Moved by Wayne, second by Casey. Do you want a roll call for that, Aaron?
Sure. Meverden.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Ortlieb.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
And then there are a lot of committee reports. If everyone had a chance to read them, any questions on all of those? If not, I would look for a motion to accept all of the committee reports.
So moved.
Second.
You never looked this way, so I was waiting.
Amy, second, I think, by Casey?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. And then the license applications, uh.
You want to?
Point of order.
Point of order.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, motion to approve, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried, thank you. Now the license applications, uh, do you want to cover that, Aaron?
Sure, so we have two license applications, I'm sorry. The first one is the temporary Class B, Class B licenses. There was a memo included in your packet. Um, you're going to be seeing a bunch of these now as we come up on concerts in the park, all the festivals, Wet Whistle Wine Fest. Um, so I'm just going to read them here so we have them in the minutes. So the temporary Class B beer and the temporary Class B liquor licenses. Our community improvement of Algoma for the Shannys' Festival and Wet Whistle Wine Fest. The Algoma Fire Rescue Association is for the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the Algoma Fire Department Celebration. And the Algoma Area Education Foundation was for their Beacon Awards at the Robert Ray Gallery on, um, April twenty-ninth. And then the applications for just the temporary Class B beer licenses. You can see the Algoma Penguins, the Algoma Boys Little League. Um, those two are for all the ballgames that happen at Peterson Park and Terry Field for the dates listed. And then the Algoma Fire Rescue Association, again, for just a Class B beer license for the C I F A Annual Car Show. Does anybody have any questions on those?
Question, Aaron.
Sure.
You're approving a license that already took place?
It's an, it's a notification to you.
Okay.
Yep, there's no council action needed on this, it's just a notification to you guys that these are the licenses that were issued or are to be issued.
Okay, thank you.
And then, does anybody have any questions on the temporary ones? Nope, okay, so you'll be seeing these coming up as we get more for concerts in the park and that kind of stuff. Then the next one is the Class B, Class B retailers license for Cadillac Jack's Barbecue and Brew LLC for five thirty, Fourth Street. Um, Tim, Timothy Treneski is going to be the agent, but we do have Von and Marie Etchinson here with us here. They are going to be opening up Cadillac Jack's Barbecue and Brew. This was vetted by the PPP Committee and was recommended for approval to issue the license. Um, with this license being issued, we will be at twelve liquor licenses issued and there are thirteen. So, um, we would still have one available after this. But since Von and Marie are here, I'd like to know if you mayor wanted to open it up and if anybody wanted to ask them any questions.
Absolutely, if anyone has any questions for Von?
Von, are you still, you're still doing off the hook, correct?
Correct.
This is just an additional place then?
Yeah.
And what, is it, barbecue, is it just barbecue or is it going to be? Give me a little background on what you're going to be doing in here, please.
We're going to be doing barbecue, we're going to have pizzas, it's going to be, um, chicken, like, um, wings and, um, mac and cheese.
Pizza, is it similar to what you have right now?
Similar, but different. Different, different recipes and whatnot, so, like, smoked foods and.
Smoked foods, basically. Good, glad to see that building is going to be occupied. It's awesome, yeah.
Do you have an anticipated date for opening?
Yeah, we're, uh, going to try and have it ready for Saturday. Um, we're going to see.
See how it goes.
Just keep it open a Saturday, don't give a date, just say Saturday.
Appreciate it, best of luck, guys.
Yeah, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Question for you, Aaron.
Yep.
There wasn't an item that had to be submitted, correct?
Yep, and all that, yep, everything was submitted.
Yep.
Yep, we have all the forms, they have all their permits, all that kind of stuff, so. Everything was good with that, so what? If nobody has any more questions for Von and Marie or for myself, then I would be looking for a motion to approve the Class B, Class B liquor license for Cadillac Jack's Barbecue and Brew.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by John, second by Scott.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Good luck, Von. Uh, and then there is the short-term rental ordinance revision. Uh, I talked to Aaron and basically we're just changing a couple of dates on it. I don't know if anyone read it or needs to go through it, if you have any questions.
So is that what you get highlighted, Aaron?
Yep, in the blue.
March, July?
Yeah, so when we had originally brought this for the first time, um, we had thought we would make it from March to February. Um, just kind of looking with how things work with tax collection, elections, that kind of stuff. We figured it was best to move it to kind of mimic the liquor licenses, get it all kind of in at the same time.
So that's the only change?
Yep, that's the only change, it looks like there's another, um.
Item B?
Yep, item B, each entity registered as a lodging establishment with Wisconsin Department of Agriculture, Trading, Consumer Protection requires its own short-term rental application and license, just something added for clarification purposes.
We'll make a motion to approve the changes to ordinance eight forty-four.
Can, can I have, ask you to add something, Scott, or, or ask for it? Uh, because it's such a minor change, can we add in the motion to waive the second reading, otherwise we have to go through this again?
Sure, uh, Mr. Mayor, and I will also conclude waiving the second reading in my motion.
Thank you.
Motion by Scott.
Second.
Second by Amy.
Amy, you're.
Yeah, Amy.
That's not by her.
All in favor?
Could we do a roll call?
Okay, I'm sorry, sure.
Okay, so I have a motion by Scott and a second by Amy Johnson to adopt ordinance eight forty-four, waiving the second reading. Um, Dashlet.
Yes.
Ortlieb.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
All right, and new business, uh, start with the cable resolution, uh, raising the cable stip, stipend. Anybody have any questions on that, I think we went over it already, but.
Make a motion to approve or accept.
Is that Casey made a motion?
Yes.
And a second from?
Second.
Kevin? Would you like a roll call on that because it's financial?
Yep. Kevin Schmidt.
Yes.
Wayne Schmidt.
Yes.
Swedberg.
Yes.
Boer.
Yes.
Ortlieb.
Yes.
Dashlet.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Meverden.
Yes.
And then B would be the flood ordinance update. Have everybody got that thick packet? Matt probably needs to take this and he probably won't be so lucky with no questions.
That's what this is for tonight, and I hope everybody read this front to back.
Oh, yeah.
But, uh, so this is. I've gotten a lot of questions today, um, last week. This has nothing to do with the RDA block. FEMA Region Five resets their boundaries and goes through the whole floodplain ordinance, um, with every municipality in the state of Wisconsin. Um, everybody kind of has different years, they don't obviously do every single municipality at the same time. But we are up to look at our ordinance. Um, before everybody today, this has gone through our legal department already, um, me and Jim went through this in, in great length. I would take any questions from anybody on council, we're not looking to adopt this tonight. All this is, is so everybody gets a chance, if anybody has a question, please get this to me. Um, we will, this will come back, there will be a public hearing and then this will be addressed, looking for adoption of this ordinance at a later date. Um, probably in June. So that's the only reason that everybody has it with them, you're going to see it a couple more times here before we look to adopt it. But, so everybody gets a copy of it, if anybody has any questions, please get them to us and we will get them answered, so.
Is there any changes, Grant?
There's, yes, there are some changes.
I don't see anything highlighted in here.
Probably one of the biggest changes that, that's made in here is there's a new section, um, for any boundaries or any, uh, current houses. Under the new ordinance, they asked, it doesn't work for any of our properties here. Uh, myself and the attorney to get them to be in compliance with it, if we would leave that in the ordinance. Um, and it's on page twenty-two, I think it was struck out.
The whole thing was just yet.
Yeah, it's, it's not in here anymore. Um, really, what, what it says is any existing houses, we'd have to raise their houses above that flood level or fill in their basements. Um, so that was struck out of here, uh, for adoption. So that was probably the only big change, a lot of it is, to be honest, cookie cutter to what is currently in place.
So who presented this to the city?
The D N R.
And does this affect, it affects the entire city, right?
It does.
When does this take effect, the new rules?
When it would be adopted.
So when you said it has nothing to do with our RDA, uh, portion of our development, that, is that grandfathered in then because?
They're actually doing everything to comply with what is already in our new flood maps. What will be our new flood maps. So our flood maps, the, the boundary waters of the floodplain didn't change, the years of them did. So if you look at the old one, the outside boundary is the same, they moved a hundred-year and a five-hundred-year floodwaters to the in, inside of those boundary waters.
Because that development was such a borderline question.
Yep, yep.
That, you know, when we started that whole project, it didn't look like there was going to be an issue and then all of a sudden now there's an issue, so it's going to have a bearing on the whole development. This has, this is not going, working in our favor?
It's, it's not working against us on that RDA development. It is not going to change where they're building, um, if, if they were building the townhomes on that side. Are, the new flood maps have already been adopted by FEMA Region Five. That, those calculations have already changed where those buildings, those townhomes on the west side of the block were going to go. So they have to abide by what would be coming up, that's where the change came in.
So there was, there's no benefit to, to those townhomes now because we're, we're not building those townhomes because of this?
Correct.
But because of the changes, there's no benefit that we can now go forward with those townhomes?
That is correct. There's, there's no benefit to us or the developer.
And this is just basically for us for information?
Yep.
And then there's a public hearing, you said?
Yes, so if anybody has any questions, we will take them, they don't have to be tonight. Um, and we will get them kind of vetted through the system and then this will be, all be coming back to everybody for public hearing and adoption.
If there are any changes to properties, whether it be they were in the floodplain and they come out or if they were not and they go in, uh, what is the notification to the property owners? Is there?
That, that is pretty much what we struck out is, so the only thing that would be effective is any new development in the floodplain. Where you had to be a foot above the high water, now you're going to have to be three feet above on a new development.
Okay.
So they're grandfathered in, basically?
More or less, they're, yes.
Existing.
Existing structures are, yes.
Good, thank you.
And you said this goes back to the D N R one more time?
This goes back to the D N R and then will come back to us.
This will go twice?
Yep.
We'll have a public hearing and then a second reading?
And then a second reading, that is correct.
And you need no action on this?
I need no action, it's informational only.
So any other questions can still be given to Matt from here. Um, and then the remote control mower renewal agreement with Kiwanee County, uh, do you want that, Matt?
Sure, um, this is, uh, agreement that we worked out with Kiwanee County, um, and it's, it's with Kiwanee County, but it is just for their courthouse maintenance. They have used our remote control lawnmower to cut the side hill of the county shop, or I'm sorry, the, the courthouse building. Um, we worked with them last year on this, the only thing that has changed is the date, um, because it was good for one year. So the date now expires at the end of this year. If the council so chooses to work, um, what did they rent it, Casey? Fifteen, yeah, twice a month from us, and they pay the city two hundred dollars, they come pick it up, they deliver it, they fill it full of fuel. Um, I think everything worked out really well.
Is it three hundred?
I'm sorry, three hundred dollars, I apologize, it was two hundred, I think we moved it to three hundred dollars a year ago.
I, I thought, excuse me.
Twice a month?
Month.
For how long?
Well, probably till all the way, yeah, maybe once in October they used it, yeah?
I thought we talked about this some time ago and then they didn't get back to us, they didn't, when we gave them the price, they told us to kind of, where the sun don't shine, but.
They did for a little while, yes, so last year when we were going through this in spring, um, they wanted, I think, two hundred dollars and that's maybe why I have two hundred dollars in my head. We went back and said, okay, we'll do it for three hundred dollars and then they didn't do anything for a while and then it came back and they adopted it at the three hundred dollars.
Been using it right now.
That is all last summer.
And they paid the three hundred dollars?
That is correct.
So what do we need on this motion?
This would be looking for a motion.
Okay, I'll move that. Moving to you, and I thought the three hundred dollars was very fair and they agreed to pay it, so.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Casey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Administrators report?
Uh, a couple of things to touch base on here with everybody, um, applications for Class B license. Uh, you don't want to read this, man. Let's use the one that's already in front of you. So Twenty Twenty Fourth Street Utility Project, that sounds more like it. Uh, they're going to be finishing up here on Division, probably Wednesday, Thursday of this week and moving up to Frank Street. Weather permitting, right now the plan is that Highway Fifty-four, Jefferson Street and Frank Avenue will be closed probably on Thursday and probably close through the weekend, probably not open back up till Monday, uh, pending on how everything goes in that intersection. They will start in that intersection on Frank and then work north from there, uh, get out of the intersection, obviously it'll be gravelled and then it'll be opened back up until everything is done before it'll be blacktopped, uh, so that's where that is. RDA project, um, moving along, there, as of right now, tentatively, we are not planning on that, on having an RDA meeting this month. Uh, Plan Commission on May ninth at eight thirty A M will hear, um, that is just to change their zoning, there's eleven, um, not, I apologize, not their zoning, it's their C S M, their Certified Survey, to move from those eleven lots into two lots. So there will be one big lot on the east side of the alley and then that smaller lot on the west side of the alley. So that is the Plan Commission meeting. The, June, there will be another Plan Commission, that's where we'll sit down, we still don't have a whole set of their plans. Um, but at that second Plan Commission meeting is where we'll sit down and go through with the developer, um, on their changes of what they're going to do on that west side lot and look at their setbacks and everything with the Plan Commission. So that's what's going on on RDA block. Uh, Border Review has open book scheduled for September nineteenth via phone from ten A M to four P M. Um, and then in-person open book, September twentieth, from one P M to four P M, that's here at City Hall. And then the Board of Review is scheduled for October twenty-third from five P M to seven P M, right here in the council chambers at City Hall. So that is all I have unless anybody has any questions.
The fifty-four intersection, Matt, are they going just to the center of the road? For the, are they tying into something, why are we digging up fifty-four?
They're, we're, that's where we're starting our tie-ins right there, so they'll, they'll be physically in the road, um, digging.
Being that's a state highway, is that, do we have to fix that different than our roads, how do we? And the reason I'm asking is, aren't they tearing up fifty-four next year?
No, they're not tearing up fifty-four till twenty thirty-two.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's, we wouldn't be if they were doing it next year.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do we need a motion to accept the?
One question, Matt. Where are we on getting that lighthouse painted, it's looking pretty poor. And that is our product, that's like our jewel.
I don't disagree.
It's really tarnished right now.
I, I don't disagree with you. Steve, do you want to answer that?
Um, we've been looking at that for a couple of months, I, we have an estimate for how much it's going to cost, but the Corps may actually move it, so we're really kind of in limbo because we don't know where we would paint it, I guess. To paint it where it is and then move it ashore and could have saved fifty thousand dollars, uh, doesn't seem like a good plan, so. So we, we have been working on it, we've been looking into what it was, what it got painted with last time, who did it, we contacted all the, uh, people that did it. Um, but we don't have any really solid answers for you right now.
Corps is going to fix the base of it, correct? That's the reason you're moving.
They're going to raise it, correct?
So, yes, so part of this, and I was hoping by tonight I would have answers from the Corps, but it's, you know, a shocker that I don't. Looking for the whole project of when are they going to start, what are they all doing to relay that to the whole general public? There's a lot of questions out there that they're lowering it two feet, that they're raising it four feet. Um, part of this project is they need to fix the base of the lighthouse and it is getting raised up, um, six to eight feet. At that time, we're, I'm working with the Corps right now, there's nothing in stone, but trying to, if they're going to raise it up and to save us, would they raise it up, move it off and take it onshore for us to clean it up and paint it and then bring it back out there?
Oh, so you're not, you're not getting a new location of it?
Not at all, it would go right back in the same location.
Cause I'm thinking, where are you going to move it for the west?
No, move it to shore and move it back.
Put it in your house.
Schmidt's driveway.
It's all right, I can use it.
If you paint it onshore, it's going to be considerably cheaper because we don't have to.
That's where the savings would come in, but now.
Yeah, correct.
That's not set in stone with the Corps, they're still hemming and hawing and.
You were trying to get the Corps to pay for it, right?
Well, ideally, I was trying to get them to do it all while they were here, but.
Yeah, the, there was like a forty thousand dollar cost just to get the equipment out there to paint it.
Yeah.
And the cost that we have doesn't entail if we have to strip it. Uh, last time they had to encase it and it was like two hundred and some thousand dollars, now it's one forty-seven because it's painted with oil base and if we don't disturb that paint, we wouldn't have to strip that off and encase it, which would save us a lot of money. So there's a lot of moving parts, uh, but we're working on it.
Well, last time they did a lot of interior work too.
Yes, they did do a little bit of interior work too, they painted the interior as well.
So for. No, for John Q Public, it is going to be painted, we just don't know when.
We don't know when and we don't know how.
Oh, okay. I think that's satisfies people because that's the question that.
But it is on the docket to be painted.
Yes.
I wish I could tell you a hard date of when it's going to happen, but that we don't know yet.
Better paint this time, because that paint didn't seem to last very long, really, I mean, from the day it got painted, it started to turn orange and.
I think this is cancer.
And it's all, and, and the paint before lasted, seemed to last a long time. So make sure we get the right paint and the right interior.
I don't disagree.
Okay.
There any other questions?
If not, we'll move on to Mayor's appointments and comments. Uh, last meeting, the reorg meeting, uh, Wayne was not here and I had appointed Wayne to the Public Works and to Redevelopment Authority. Um, and I would be looking for a motion to put him there, can I get a motion for both at one time? Is that okay? So to appoint Wayne to Public Works and Redevelopment Authority, I would look for a motion.
You mean Public Commission? You said Public Works.
Public Works and Redevelopment, yep. I missed the, was that John? John moved, second by Casey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. That carries. And then we're looking for a nomination of a council member to the Planning Commission. And we, oh, go ahead.
Nominate Amy Johnson.
That's second.
All right, I have John nominated Amy and Casey second, is there any other nominations for the Planning Commission? And one last time, a nomination for planning. If not, I will accept a motion from John, seconded by Amy, all in favor?
Seconded by Casey.
Uh, seconded by Casey, I'm sorry, for Amy to be on planning. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. And the last, uh, one was for the tourism and promotion, I was asked, uh, to replace Lee Hosh. Um, and so I want to take you down the road, I went down this a little bit. I went back to that commission and talked to the people on the commission and I got a, a lesson on what that commission was. Uh, and I appreciated that, uh, I had, I really was, uh, not in the right ballpark, I guess I'll leave it at that. Uh, I had asked Ken Taylor to be on that commission, uh, for the reasons of his public service and, um, fundraising in the past and realized that that wasn't the way I was supposed to go, so I accepted that I was wrong on that, was told that. And, uh, I asked Ken to step back and I asked Megan Lautenbach from Millie's to be part of that group to represent another business, the restaurant industry, a younger view, to balance out that commission. And Megan has accepted that, so I would be looking for a motion to put Megan on as appointment. And then I was asked to take Lee off because he wasn't a member of, uh, the city. And I cannot find anything anywhere to say that he has to be, the commission is very upset that we would pull him off of there. There wasn't one person on the commission, uh, with the exception of Casey, that wanted him off, although the degree of what he did was different, some were very enthusiastic, some wished he would do things different. Anyway, long story short, so I reached out to Lee and I asked him for two things, who he was and a budget for the last ten years, and their budget has gone from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand, so whatever they're doing is working. And I'll leave it at that. Uh, Lee's been on there for nine years, he has two businesses here, both chamber members. Um, he's been working in Algoma for, since nineteen eighty-eight. Um, it goes on and on and I won't get into it much, but again, the point was even the tourism, um, ordinance doesn't say that he can't be on there. And then the last thing I found was this, and this is what made up my mind for me, and I'll read this. It says stakeholder engagement is essential to a quality planning process. "Stakeholder engagement is essential to a quality planning process. Our proven planning framework establishes expectations and opportunities for involvement for city residents, organizations, and business owners," of which Lee owns two. And that phrase, that suggestion, cost the city eighty thousand dollars. We okayed that. That became our city comprehensive plan. And so for that reason, I can't see my way to pull him off of there, for the reason that he doesn't live in the city. So I would be looking for the council to see if they see the same path I see, and look for a recommendation to leave him on there, and reappoint him to that committee. So it would be for Megan Lattenbach, and for Lee Hosh.
Question?
Okay.
Who is Megan replacing?
Ginger Mills was New Yorky.
And why didn't she go off?
Um, a couple reasons, but she's got a lot going on. She contributes her time to a lot of different places, and so she just thought that her time was served better in other areas.
It, it- Also, her voice not being, being heard, which is a common, common thing that I've had with people of my generation. It's not an age thing, but that's, I know three people that have served on committees or commissions through us, and each one of them has felt like it's been a tremendous waste of their time. And because there seems to be a seated notion that if, if it skews from what's typical, or what's, what we've been doing, then somehow it's, it's not able to go on. It's not even slow-nose, it's just like, nah, we can't do that, cause that's not how we've been doing it.
Well, you sit, you serve on there.
I do.
I, I have a question on why you don't meet during the summer. I mean, all our other committees meet every month, and this is, tourism is very important to the city, why don't you meet during the summer months?
Can I say something before you answer that? I did talk with all the other committee members, and asked them if they would be willing to meet, and they are more than willing to meet, and they think that that would be a good idea. There's no schedule set, they didn't say every month, or every other month, or, but, so it was brought up by more than one person, more than just you, and, and including Megan, thought that it would be beneficial to meet.
Well, it's important.
During the summer. So, I don't know if that helps answer that question for you, but-
Is Megan a city resident, beside your business? Does Megan live in town?
Yes.
Yeah, but you don't have-
I mean, if I had, if we had people that applied, and they all live in the city of Algoma, then I would always, I would recommend people in the city of Algoma paying city taxes. Now, if Megan's in, in the city, that's fine. Now, Lee, if nobody else wants it, well then, I don't really care.
Nobody reached out to me, I didn't go out of my way to reach out to them because of the path I took. But like I said, it says right in there, business owners, so he does pay taxes. And it, if he was just an outside resident, I would've taken a different path.
Does, does there, did we ever give any thought to taking this Tourism and Promotion, and just turning it over to the chamber, where in my opinion, it belongs? I mean, the executive of the chamber serves on there anyway. She writes all the checks, she takes care of all the monies. Why don't we just give it to the chamber and let them run with it? Why is the city even involved in this?
Because it's a tax?
Well, I think the business owners should have a say.
There's, there's two ways the state statute says you can do it. One is to start a tour, Tourism Commission, which the city of Algoma did in the nineties, I wanna say?
Twenty sixteen was the last of it, I don't know when it started.
It was before that.
Yeah.
Or you can give it directly to a tourism identity, which would be the Chamber of Commerce. There's a lot of municipalities that don't have a T and P commission, it goes right to their chamber. There's some municipalities that don't have a chamber, then they created a Tourism and Promotion, or a, a commission to handle this money, or you can't collect the tax. The tax can't go right into the general fund budget.
Right. You, you have to separate it, I understand that. It's just to me that, you know, every year, this thing comes up with these appointments, they're only one-year appointments, too.
Cause it's a commission.
Well, whether it's a commission or not, it's a commission that it's structured. But, you know, when you say you haven't had anybody ask you, how did Megan, how did you come across Megan then, for this?
Um, I sought Megan out because of the recommendations of the-
So, but you didn't seek out anybody else besides Megan?
I did not, because the recommendation was to keep Lee.
Okay. Who's recommendation?
The rest of the committee, commission.
Wasn't Noel, not mine?
No.
Um, what, what was their, what was their, their temperament when they, they suggested? Was it-
Um, I don't wanna name them by name, but one said, "I like Lee, and he does good things, and he's been doing it for so long, but I wish we could pry a little more money from him." That was the exact phrase. One said, "I was put on the commission, and it's not anything that I thought it was gonna be." So there was a whole bunch of-
But how do those, that, those don't sound like ringing endorsements. Those just sound like general, general things.
Two people said, "If Lee goes, maybe I should go." So those are ringing endorsements.
Now, that's the question here, though. So we're, we're going to, we're gonna put it into the, the hands, and granted, don't get me wrong, I know both of them have contributed tremendously, right? And I'd certainly want to, to see at least one of them stay on, because I, I think that there is a, a good balance there, and I respect the, the hell out of it. The problem is, that if they're going to try to hold, hold the, the commission hostage for their preference-
I don't think they are.
Well, if, it feels like that. If, if he's not going to, we're not going to, right? And so I'm not questioning dedication to city, but dedication to this process comes into question. And what becomes problematic is, let's say there's other things, right? And we, we touched on this a little bit. Let's say there's things that I find problematic. You said to me, "That's on the commission, the commission has to do that." But we're setting up a commission where we have basically an entrenched three-three tie, theoretically, where, where if in fact, I found something, I suggest it's something that shouldn't be done, it would never be able to be pushed back against, right? Because those three, if they're gonna, if they're going to form a voting bloc in solidarity, just those three, then how, how can we expect, how can we expect new ideas to move forward? How can we expect, you know, a breadth of ideas to be discussed? And how can we be sure that, that it's actually in the best interest of the city, in the best interest of that particular commission? And on top of it, the whole, the notion of fifty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars, sure, they, you know, I'm sure, they certainly have contributed, you know, and our, our fishing industry has very, very much increased, and it's, it's, it's great. But when I ask the question, how do we know how well the magazines are working, or that the commercials are working? Anything that, that doesn't have tangible counts, it's, it's like this amorphous notion of like, well, that's just how it is. And I, I find it problematic, because I feel like the whole idea of getting, you know, not being able to pry more money out of it, is because we're in a holding pattern, an old order of holding patterns. And thankfully, this year, we've, we've put a few thousand dollars towards actual social media things, that we'll be able to see, verify what kind of traffic we're getting on it. But it, it's problematic to me, where it's like, hey, how do we know this is working? Right? How do we know that it's not any number of other businesses? Look at the way that the downtown has transformed in the last decade here. The number of people that now live in here that didn't live in here, the number of people that live here that have businesses here, that have a vested interest, that are qualified for the same reasons that, that Lee is, except for are also residents, from, with different perspectives, and, and you know, a different grasp. To suggest that they were the, the only ones that drew it, right? They're doing a good job for it.
I did not suggest that.
No, but the, the implication that you made was, they're obviously, they're obviously doing a good job, because the budget has gone-
Yes, all of you.
Fifty thou, yeah, I-
All of you.
Right. Fifty thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars. But, but without having a way to verify how credible those things work, how can we make that, that conclusion? How can we, how can we jump to that notion?
I got, I got a whole bunch to digest here, so can I start answering?
Yeah.
Okay, first, your, your theory of, I have just made it a fifty-fifty, is that just because there's three young people and three old people?
No, I actually, I think that that's a, that's, I, I, I find that untoward.
No, I'm asking.
No, no, why, why, why would I define it on age? Age doesn't have anything to do with it.
I'm asking you what you defined it on.
What I'm defining it on, is that you've said that there are two people that said they won't serve if a third person didn't-
No, they said, "If he can't be there, maybe we shouldn't be there." They did not say they're leaving.
The, the, why, why would you even, why would they dangle that over, over, like it's some sort of motion to, like, to, to, to prime the pump?
I have no allegiance to anybody on that commission.
I'm not suggesting you do.
I, I don't think I've ever had a face-to-face conversation with Lee, ever in my life. Even to this day, I, I've made sure that I called him in person, cause I didn't wanna give the perspective that I'm, I, I, I looked up all the information, I could look up all the facts that I could come up with, and I can't find one thing to tell me to take him off that commission. I just, I, I'm just being fair and honest.
No, I get it, like, but the, the, the question was never qualifications, and I said it, that, at the last meeting, that, the thing was, was-
No, I, yes, yes.
And there's, there's no reason that a non-resident can't, but there are, are dozens of reasons, or dozens of residents, I'm sure, that would, would serve if they were, were addressed. And that was the ma, that was the major point of contention, not qualifications. I, I know what he does, I know how, how he participates in the community, I know he's done great work. It's not anything to do with, with Lee, it's, it's, it's about looking at where the future is here, right? And seeing that, we've had a lot of change in the decade, and there's certainly available people that would be willing to serve. Maybe one person, or two people, or three people, if all those, if all three decide that they wanna fly the coop, and I don't want, I don't want-
And we are changing, though, correct?
What's that?
We are changing, because I talked to Rosemary for a couple hours, and she has the metrics that you say are in place to check. So, we're transitioning.
Only for the Facebook stuff?
Not according to her, she has a lot of things going on there.
You know, you still can't check it. But anyways, the, 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 the point is still, the, the, the consideration was, was residence, it wasn't qualifications.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Murray, I got a question.
Okay.
Can we vote on Megan first? Cause she's a city resident, let's get her taken care of. I'm, I'm pro Megan. And should we wait maybe a month or so on the other one and see, give the chance for other city residents? I know one that came to mind, that he said he was supposed to be called, and he never was, and he kinda got upset, cause he wasn't called, and now he doesn't wanna do it. But then that would give people in the community that want, might wanna serve on this a chance, instead of just rushing into it. And we could debate this all day, right, Casey? We could sit for two hours doing this, but we could get Megan done.
But isn't our city comprehensive plan that we okayed?
Well, comprehensive plan is just a guide of things in the future. Comprehensive-
But we paid eighty thousand dollars for it.
We've had four comprehensive plans since I've been on the council, and we haven't followed each one to the T, because life changes. People change, businesses change. We don't follow one plan and just say we're never gonna do anything. It's like anything in the city. We don't just build a sewer one, one way down the road, we might have to move it, cause things are in the way. So, I think we could, my opinion is to deal with Megan's appointment first, and then we can talk about the second position, unless nobody wants to. I don't care. But we could debate all day who we think should live in the city.
Well, is the position actually open, Kevin? Is the position actually open, or is it already filled?
Well, we have two spots.
We didn't follow the plan for sidewalks.
We have two spots for this.
Within the comprehensive.
We got Ginger who stepped down, and now we have-
And we lost the whole block on Mill Street. That was my concern, is I said the comprehensive plan did that. I mean, I'm getting off the subject, but, I mean, you can't say it goes according to-
I don't know what the comprehensive plan said for the sidewalks, so I can't. My choice would be to leave out Lee on, and put Megan on, and it'd be a fifty-fifties place.
I think as a point of clarification, the mayor makes appointments, the council approves them or disapproves them. End of story.
Just, just to clarify off of what you said, you have one appointment right now on the Tourism and Promotion Commission, that is the council member of Casey Bore.
Right.
After that, all of the citizen, there are no citizen appointments that have been motioned, seconded, anything like that. So you would be looking for the four citizens that you were going to approve, could you list them off again?
Which would be Bob Davis, Jan Dart, Megan Lattenbach, Lee Hosh.
And then there's one chamber rep who the chamber appoints to put on. So right now, there is nobody on it besides Casey.
Does it have, it has to go all up, or all down?
All.
No, it can't, like the, the thing?
You could pick and choose.
Yeah, you guys can make a motion for-
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I'm-
You just couldn't put somebody on in a place of X.
Right, okay.
He'd have to come back with a name.
Or the same, however, however he chooses to do it.
Could you repeat the names again? I'm only getting-
Um, would be Bob Davis.
Got it.
Jan Dart.
Got it.
Megan Lattenbach.
Got it.
Lee Hosh.
Okay.
And Rosemary is the chamber rep.
Yeah, Rosemary, okay.
And Casey.
Yeah.
And Casey would be the council rep.
I see what you're saying now with being six, you have an even number.
Correct.
Sometimes seven would be better.
Well, six isn't my choice.
It's, it's what the commission, the laws of the commission are written.
I'll make a motion to approve Megan, Megan Lattenbach to the Tourism and Promotion Committee.
I'll second it.
Motion by Amy, seconded by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. But now we have Bob Davis, Jan Dart, and Lee Hosh, who have not been approved.
I'll make a motion for Bob Davis.
Yep, sorry, I didn't.
Sorry.
Wayne made a motion for Bob.
Okay. I'll second.
Seconded by Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
One, Casey was opposed.
Was opposed.
Question is, Dan, is Jan Dart a city resident?
Yes, yes, yes. She lives on Villa Heights.
Oh, okay. No, she moved.
You voted, you said?
You.
Yep.
I'll make a motion for Jan Dart.
Uh, Lee, Lee already made it.
Seconded, Kevin?
Sure.
Kevin, Kevin seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. And what about Lee Hosh?
I, I would make a motion to, to not approve, pending the opportunity to, to find a resident that also meets the other qualifications.
In your motion, do you have a timeline on this?
I mean, ideally sooner than, you know, later.
The next council meeting.
Yeah, well, yeah, I, I guess that, I mean, yes, that sounds right.
A month.
A month, yeah.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose.
No.
Very disappointed. Alright, we'll move on. Agenda items for next meeting, get them to Aaron. Do you have any?
Can, can I ask a question about some, why, I look at our committees, and we're so slanted, correct, for example, we have two council people, we have three citizen members on there. I think we need to look at our committees. That, that makes no sense that we have citizen appointments that outnumber the number of council members on a committee that are elected to serve. Why do we have three citizen members and only two council representatives?
That's, that's how it was written.
The structure of the way they were, that, I don't know how long ago that got set up, but that, that, I mean, that isn't fair.
Would you like a review at the Finance and Personnel meeting?
Could I have that on for that agenda, please?
Of the structure of all of the committee members?
Like all? Like Board of Appeals, zoning, RDA?
Well, the ones-
Tourism and Promotion?
The ones that the council members serve on. I wanna look at the, the makeup.
Okay.
Can, can we look at that?
Do that in June, instead of May?
Yeah.
That, I, that would give us some more time, if that's okay? If we could do it at the Finance-
June, cause I won't be here.
Yeah, that's fine, June, I don't, I, but it's been something that we've talked about in the past several times, and I think it's time it comes to a head.
We'd have to rewrite some of the ordinance language and that. So, yeah, if you would mind, if you wouldn't mind if we could have until June to-
That's fine.
Dig that up, and-
Are you trying to even them out, Wayne? Or what is the purpose?
No, I'm, I'm trying to look at, at the committees, to see how many council members we have versus how many citizen appointments.
Why is that important?
Because I think the people that sit around this table are elected, and are held accountable. When you're a citizen member, you're not held accountable by anybody.
Well, except by the people that appoint you, and two, you get-
Right.
You get more diversity and knowledge and background-
Well, diversity comes around this table also.
Into that committee than you would just resist this group.
Point of order. This is, this is the kind of conversation we can have, uh, when on the agenda.
This is on the agenda. I'm looking for this on Finance and Personnel.
In June, if that's okay?
It's a valid point, I think, to have, but I think in the appropriate time.
Yep.
Are you okay with that, Mayor? Otherwise, I'd have to have him have a second.
No.
You okay?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Then, next meeting will be June third, at five o'clock, our new time. Thank you.
Could you ask for a motion to adjourn?
Sorry, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mitch. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.